I call the August 20th Committee, the whole meeting to order at 6:10 PM. Ms. Henry, would you call the roll, please?
Alderman Memms.
She's not here yet.
Alderman Hayden.
Here.
Alderman Kreizak.
Here.
Alderman Emerson.
Here.
Alderman Scott.
Here.
Alderman Van Buisker.
Here.
Alderman Walters.
Excused.
Alderman Azier.
Not here.
Alderman Myers.
He'll be here real shortly.
Alderman Garza.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. An ask for approval of the August 13th, 2024 Committee, the whole meeting minutes.
So moved.
Ms. Hayden, you have the motion.
Diane said second.
Ms. Kreizik, you got the second. Call the roll, please.
Alderman Hayden.
Yes.
Alderman Kreizak.
Yes.
Alderman Scott. Alderman Azier. Alderman Myers. Alderman Emerson.
Abstain.
Alderman Garza.
Yes.
Alderman Van Buisker.
Yes.
Alderman Memms.
We have five voting yes, two abstentions. All right, fiscal year 2024, 2025 departmental budget presentation, starting off with community development. Diane Egger, what do you have for us, ma'am?
Good evening, Mayor and Board of Aldermen. I would like to present to you this evening the, for your consideration, the community development budget for 2025. And I want to thank Damon for his hours of answering my questions, his helping guide. He's probably sick of hearing from me, but I appreciate your guidance, sir. The first highlight that you'll notice on my budget is an increase in personnel. We have one increase in personnel for animal control, which was give us three employees dedicated to code enforcement and two to animal control and one to business licensing.
Let me interrupt you just for a minute.
Yes, sir.
I've got you as loud as I can before we have some kind of feedback. Could you move the microphone closer to you, please?
Sure thing.
Thank you.
Sit up here. All right. So with that increase in additional personnel, that would allow us to do proactive code enforcement, which will fulfill the strategic goals and strategic plans that you wanted to have instituted. And what I've, I would like to start is what's called the PACE program, which is not really a clever acronym, I guess, but PACE, which would be obvious, proactive code enforcement program. And with the PACE program, with this additional person, we will send all of our staff out to a one particular neighborhood and then screen and comb the area for any kind of violation that we find, whether that's zoning, codes, businesses, whatever it could be. So we would alternate neighborhoods and wards using the PACE program with the additional staff if that is approved. The other increase that you'll see is an increase in the professional services budget, which is for animals. The reason for this increase is because how it worked before was the previous contractor would hold the dog for us for Department of Ag rules. We have to hold the dog for five days. It's our dog. Then we, if the owner doesn't come and get the dog, then we release it. And in the past, we released it to the shelter. They took ownership of the dog and cared for the dog. Since January, that process has had to change because of the Department of Rural standards. So we hold the dog beyond those five days even. So until a dog is adopted, fostered, which is what we do, then we have to pay for the cost, which is why that is reflected in the budget. That is the increase. You'll see other slight increases. Working with Damon, we kind of keep it like it was last year. The other slight increases would be just for incidental costs. You'll actually see a decrease in postage and certain fees that have to do with paper, and that is because we went online with business licensing and permitting, which also fulfills one of the strategic plan goals for the board, which was to streamline the business license process for businesses. So we did that. So that decreases the postage cost and paper printing just a little bit. Those are the main changes that we've made to the budget. So if I'm here for any questions.
Okay, before we move on, Ms. Henry, one hit noted that Ryan Myers has arrived and he wants to, he knows what we're voting on. He wants to make sure he votes on that.
I mean, yes vote for the amendments from the last committee of the whole meeting.
Got it down. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we have five yeses now. I miscounted the last one, so. All right, Ms. Garza.
Yes, Ms. here. You were talking about the printing part.
Yes.
Where is that at? Because I'm looking, the one I'm looking at is like the courier. There's like a big difference from this year to, is that what you just were talking about? Okay, so it's not under the postage area.
Yeah, printing and promotions, which would be under courier.
Okay, thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Point out the, sorry, additional on your capital at the very end of the.
Can you move your microphone closer?
Capital sales tax is the next one I was looking at. Diane, regarding the vehicle that you wanted to purchase along with the animal control vehicle.
Oh, yes. Yes, we do have an animal control vehicle. Thank you, Damon. But we have an animal control vehicle that is being outfitted, as it says. We're going to replace a minivan that we've been using with an actual animal control vehicle, and that's just a better process for the animals. I'll just put it that way. But that is an additional, yeah, capital expenditure. And then on the goals, I guess on the front page, I could talk about the minor home repair program. One of your goals was, our goals as well, is to revitalize the neighborhoods using, excuse me, the minor home repair program. And we were slated for 10 this year, and we are on track to do 10. So we've completed six. Two are in the works right now, and two are, have been vetted and will, about to begin. So we'll complete the 10 that was in the budget for last year. We'll have completed the full 10.
Anyone else? Very good. That was easy enough.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Public Works, Robinson Camp.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Want to thank you for your, spending your time today discussing a really exciting topic, but it is important. One of the things that we've kind of changed up this year is our goals this year and how they're performed out. So we try to put some type of performance measures into the budget this year. And some of the performance measures that we put in was street sweeping, replacement of signs, and the number of potholes repaired. So this is kind of our base benchmark year, kind of looking at what we've had before and where we're going to further on that. The next thing I'd like to point out is our personnel summary. If you noticed, there is a difference on the administrative assistant. Wanted you to know that that is not a reduction or a add-on to our product. Our personnel, that is actually a change in funding. For the last couple of years, we didn't realize that how we had it budgeted versus our FTE, FTE, was actually different. So we're adjusting that FTE to match our actual budget numbers. So there is no personnel that has gained or lost on that. There were some minor errors with that also, but for the most part, we are dropping a senior maintenance worker position and adding an extra mechanic. That is the only thing that's actually changed in our personnel, but we are not adding or removing any personnel. We're just changing positions so we can address the issues and operations of Public Works.
Ms. Henry, would you please note that Alderman Memms has arrived?
Go ahead.
Yes, sir.
I was going to say, you should be, all have on your desk, in front of you, the revised, updated one of the, for the personnel as well as that for the Public Works. So they should have exactly what you got there, Rob.
Since I didn't have this here to me, switching those two positions, is that the same pay or is it the?
Pretty much the same pay, yes.
Okay, that's all.
Same salary width on that, yes. We actually, that position is actually vacant at the time, so we're not actually getting rid of anybody to fill that position.
Wire stop there for just a second, a little housekeeping now that almost everybody's here. To be ADA compliant when we're talking and whatever gets picked up by the microphone, even though we're not seeing it up there, if there's people at home watching it that can't hear, they're seeing whatever is being said, including anything you accidentally say on a microphone that's open. So please make sure you have your microphone off when you're talking, when you're not talking, and on when you're talking. Thank you. Go ahead, Rob.
Okay, I'm just going to point out on my budget, the different items that might have been increased from the last year previous. The first one, if you noticed on page 13, it is talking about the increase in uniforms. For the past years, we've had some low personnel that we've had. So fortunately, we have more personnel. So that means we need more uniforms. And so that's why the uniform budget has been increased to address those issues and also to purchase overalls and snow equipment for safety reasons and keep people warm during the snow season. So that is why. Oh, it's on 12? I was just seeing if you were paying attention. For the, for the uniforms. The other one is on the professional services. That has gone up a little bit. That is due to our traffic contract. We contracted one out to do our bi-annual signal maintenance program. They check to see if it's actually running right, to make sure there's no conflicts. They do that twice a year. That has gone up 5%. So that is why that process has gone up. The next one is computer services. If you notice, that one has jumped up quite a bit. The reason for that is just we are putting contracts where they're supposed to be. We have put CityWorks in contract services rather than computer services. So that is the main jump that causes the one to be lower and the other one to be higher. So that is the reason why that. No additional money has been actually added to those. It's just rearranging the finances to the appropriate accounts. The next one is repair and maintenance. We raised that just a little bit due to our, our increase of personnel. We have, we have fortunately had some people that know how to weld, so we've increased our welding capabilities on that, so we don't have to outsource that as much. In addition to that, we also have a telephone budget in our, in Public Works. We manage some of the city's full contract services, and part of that is the telephones. We contracted through AT&amp;T, and that contract ran up last year and increased quite a bit. So that is the reason why that has increased as well. Any questions on the Public Works 10162 before I go on to the next one?
Your light's on. Ms. Hayden.
Just a quick question. On the revised versus the old one, I'm just confused about the numbers. I heard you say that you're trying to get it to match what was actually in the books or something like that.
So which one are you talking about?
I'm talking about the FTE, the full-time, the personnel summary.
So on the FTE, on the very first one, you will notice that the FTE of .4. That is, for that one, I'm just saying that we are not losing any personnel or gaining any personnel. So part of our staff is taken out of the budget of 101 and 501. So we deal with the regulars, street and stormwater, and then 501 to sewer. So part of that personnel cost gets split. And so in the past, we did .9 and .9. Well, the other person also deals in both. And so how we budgeted was a little different than what we did in the budget. So the FTE is actually matching, matching the numbers that are in our budget.
Okay, so, excuse me. So when I look at the 23 versus the 24 budget, it says 11.70 in the revised one, but the old one shows 17.30. So it seems that we're losing employees, but that's not really true?
That's not really true.
Okay, all right. And then what is a traffic specialist? And it looks like we're adding, we're going to try to add that. And, oh, I'm sorry, this is on, so maybe I shouldn't be looking at that. That's on the old one rather than the revised one. Are we going to try to add a traffic specialist?
So the traffic specialist was actually promoted into a traffic supervisor, so we actually removed that traffic specialist last year.
Okay.
And that was added to the supervisors this year.
Okay, all right. That's all I have. Thank you.
Ms. Henry, if you also would show that Alderman Azier has arrived. Anyone else? Thank you.
I still have some more to go.
I know, but thank you for that part. Only one question. Go ahead.
Okay, on transportation tax, that is most of our budget that has to deal with streets. One thing I want to point out is that on our professional services, that has gone up just a little bit to address the goals and, what is that called? The goals and that strategic planning, there we go, the strategic planning of the board with traffic calming. So that is addressed in that particular portion of the professional services. It's not actually lined out on the budget per se, but that is something that I want to address to the board, to note that we are addressing that concern that you brought to the board. And that's where the money is going to come out, is from that portion of the contract. So at that portion, that is why that's a little higher than normal. The next one is maintenance and repairs and maintenance. Downtown, Raytown has some decorative lights. Six of them are no longer working, and in order to repair those, we need about $65,000 to repair those. So that is put in the budget for that aspect of it as well as traffic maintenance. Our traffic maintenance for the past several years has only been $12,000. And if you've noticed, we've had a lot of signs being replaced, and they need more replacement. So we increased that budget to meet that demand. And the last one is the capital expenditures for roadway improvement. Thank you for this year. You did $1.2 million for Raytown Road. Last year, we were only budgeted half a million. We were, we were expecting a million, so we just put in a million this year to match that. We had, during the budget cycle, we had hoped to follow Spire in doing the, during their pipeline where they do one side of the road, and then we do the other side of the road, and they are going down 75th Street. And unfortunately, that is beyond our budget to match on that project. So that's what we were hoping to do on this roadway maintenance project, but the funds to match that is too great for our budget. So right now, I don't have a particular guidance on where, which roads we're going to do next, but we'll, whenever we reevaluate what roads we need to do next, I'll bring that to your attention and keep you updated on that. So that's all I have for the transportation tax. Any questions?
Yes, Ms. Memms.
Mr. Mayor, down on page 17, on the transfer, operating transfers, what is that? What are we transferring?
That's your sales tax to pay for your TIF eats. So each of these sales, sales tax, we transfer those amounts back into our, our general fund to pay for the TIF.
That we're transferring it back into the TIF?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone else on that part?
I would like to point out, too, one of the things, too, like Rob was saying about the amount of money that it takes in order to do the projects, and I want to point this out, because when we look at the 1.7 million that we're expecting the revenue for sales tax, and we look at the bottom where it's 2.1 million, we have to take funds out of our fund balance in order to do those projects. So, so when we start to look at those, understand that as we go forward, and I know I've been kind of tooting that horn about a couple of sales taxes are coming up to be, have to go back to be renewed, this is one of them. And even at the amount that it's at, it still doesn't give us enough to do the full throttle of projects. You just mentioned about 1.2 million of doing Raytown Road, which is probably one of our, I'd probably say the biggest complete roadway project we've had in quite some time, and that came out of 1.2 million, and your revenue was 1.7. So typically, even if we do more than projects than what we have touted, we're going to eat up all the money we got there. So just to bring that to your attention, but also, as you talk to constituents, there's not a slush of money left to do certain projects. And that's if we don't get a project that may be over the top as far as something that could be emergency or things like that, then we have to go beyond your transportation into your general fund, whereas worry most of your salaries and everything's come out. And I'm sorry, Rob, but I just wanted to bring out another one that I, what I saw in yours. I want you all to understand, one of the things that he did in his repair and maintenance is he's lined out, this is back on page 13, everything from our fuel tank repair to a hydrotic lift to propane fuels and sprinkler system and waste fluid pickup. Some of these things were not lined out in the budgets before, and we wanted to line them out now to kind of give a more of a breadth of what we actually do service-wise. A lot of times, when you see general numbers, you really don't get the idea of just how much they do, even in operating our buildings, operating our own fuel, fuel station for our vehicles, operating our own mechanic system, those type of things, along with the building itself. This past year, we've had everything from a blackout, different areas of dealing with computer systems, whatever it may be, those all go into operation costs as far as things we're trying to do. So I'm going to hand that back over to Rob.
Thank you. What do you got for us?
Are we doing, am I doing the capital tax? I didn't think I was. Okay. 401. So the next one is the stormwater fund. Again, I want to bring, I'm only going to bring attention to items that have been increased. Most of it that has been increased is our miscellaneous contractuals. During our GO bond, we talked to you a little bit about the adopted drain program, and so that has been lined out into this part of the miscellaneous contract. Part of that paraphernalia that you got to help identify that you actually adopted that street, we do have to pay a portion of that for the citizen to get that, that paraphernalia and be proud of, of adopting a drain. So that, that portion does have to be billed back to us, and that portion is lined out in this line item. Another one is our NEAR program that we use to help us. Currently, we use that as part of our sanitary sewer program to help us figure out where our sanitary sewer will default the quickest and what areas we need to address first before any other projects. We update that program with each project we complete, and so that, we reevaluate each area that we need to do and go to which area we need to go to next. One of the interesting things, because we've had the GO bond with, as part of that NEAR program, part of our flooding issues, we've used the NEAR sanitary sewer as well as the NEAR stormwater to overlay those different maps and try to figure out, does that have to do with flooding? Does that have to do with our sanitary sewer program? And it was very interesting to see that overlay. We'll try to get, bring some type of presentation to kind of let you see how we're using that and how it benefits us in that process. But this last year, or this year, it was used in our GO bond evaluation process, so since that process will be over, as far as the concept design, we want to keep on using them to help us out with our stormwater process along with our sanitary sewer. So the $25,000 is just for the stormwater process, and you'll see that reflection near also in the sanitary sewer. Last year was not budgeted in the stormwater, so this is an increased cost to that process on that. The next one is twofold. If you haven't heard about some of the complaints lately about sinkholes being developed throughout town due to heavy rains, we don't have the manpower to identify and repair those sinkholes, and we don't know whether it's sanitary sewer or stormwater. So we've divided those, that project in half. You'll see some of it in sanitary sewer and in stormwater. And what we're going to do, part of it, you'll see in engineering costs as the design part and then $300,000 on each side for the construction of those projects. So those, those are the increase in the stormwater, and also you'll see that in the sanitary sewer. And that's all for stormwater. Do you have any questions on that?
Doesn't look like it.
Next one is sanitary sewer. Again, the different FTE, again, though we aren't losing anybody and we're not gaining anybody, it's just a change of position. There are some little bit of errors in this, but basically, I want you to know that we are not hiring any new personnel. We're not gaining or losing any positions as well. It's just a different end class and person who's working that position. The only other things that are already pointed out was the miscellaneous contract and the uniforms increased because of increased employees. Any questions on sanitary sewer?
Good to see we're not short of employees in that division like we were.
Have any capital, besides the one I just talked about? You want me to talk about my capital projects? Okay. And the last but not least is the capital projects for Public Works. The first one is on the brine application equipment. We are, we are kind of changing the way that we attack snow in our, in our city. We have seen more and more cities put down brine before the snow events, and it happens to help remove snow much easier and quicker and also reduce the amount of salt that is needed for that process. So the last two years, we have sent our operations manager to a winter conference. He's come back each time with that recommendation, so we have decided to, we evaluated what we needed to address the city. And so we're going to buy two types of brine applying equipment that go in the back of a dump truck or pickup, and we're going to buy two different applications that go on the trucks. We feel that those two applications can handle the city. Obviously, you do that before the snow event happens, so, you know, we know three or four days in advance that snow's coming, so we are, we will be able to address the whole city using that brine equipment. Some cities have the equipment to be able to. using that brine equipment. Some cities have the equipment to be able to, to create the brine, but Kansas City has their own brine equipment. So we can purchase the brine directly through them. So we didn't feel like it was necessary for us to actually bind it, buy the brine equipment to do that. So we have reached out and asked if they, we could use that process, and they were in agreement with that. So we're just going to buy the two applications that go on the back of the pickup.
I do have a question on that. So when you say applications, are you talking about two different types of brine?
No, we, brine.
Applicators.
Just applicators, two applicators.
So just so people out there listening will understand, because a lot of people in the years past have had this question a bunch. So what they need to understand is the brine only works if we know snow's coming. If we've got a rainstorm or something like that coming ahead of time, we won't use it because that doesn't work because it'll wash your way, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Just wanted everybody to understand. Thank you. Ms. Crete?
Putting down the brine also kind of keep us from icing, you know, how we have the melting and, yeah.
Yeah, so.
And then freezing.
Brine actually has a better melting point than what salt does. So that's a better applicator and also lasts on the streets a lot longer. I'm sure you guys have seen multiple times different streaks down the middle of the road, even after you think that it's going to snow and you're like, three days later, it's still there. That's the brine still onto the street. So if it did happen to rain or snow that next day, you see that, that will activate and help reduce the icing in the roads.
Another question. So are they putting another chemical in there to keep it from diluting?
Uh, no, it is not.
Ah, okay.
So you'd have to use salt at that point. You'd have to use salt at that point. Brine's just a, ahead of time to where it also keeps it from binding to the, to the surface of the road.
So when it snows, it basically dilutes that snow. And when it dilutes that snow, it keeps it from freezing. So it's a higher concentration when you put it in. Next one is our fleet replacement program. As you know, fleet is a rising cost for the city. We are looking at different avenues to help us reduce the cost of that. Damon has asked me to look at various items or different companies that could help us maybe purchase or lease vehicles. We haven't made that sound decision yet, but definitely we want to put that in the budget to help us address that issue and maybe save us some money in the long run. We'll bring, we have an idea of what that cost might be, and that's what's budgeted right now. But we haven't made any definite plans or even definite decisions as of yet. But we just want to make sure that you are aware that we are looking at the best plausible solution to help us keep our aging fleet more up to date and also addressing issues of keeping costs down. Okay? Any questions on that?
Anyone?
Okay. Next one is the notification app for citizens. One of the things that we also want to do is we want our response time to be something that everyone in the city can do in a reasonable amount of time. Damon has asked me to look at various different entities to help us maybe notify us of a pothole or a code violation, or a dog running around town, or something that, to that nature. And we've looked at different types of applications already. But being the public works minded, not, we always don't always think as everybody. So I have an idea, but I haven't talked to community development. I haven't talked to police. So we want to make sure that we communicate with everybody before we make that decision. We want to make sure that all the players are at the table before we make the sound decision. But this was an estimated cost to be able to get that application up and running for the citizens to work and so that they can have a, a quick way to notify us of any issues. And then being able to hear that response back, kind of like the 311 in Kansas City. I have used that, I live in Kansas City, I've used that a couple of times, and I've been impressed on how fast I get responses on that. So we're trying to move in that direction. And again, there has not been a sole decision on this yet, but we are definitely looking at that possibility to implement that in this next year.
That would be great. Cut down a lot of phone calls and crazy stuff on Facebook, people complaining, not knowing where to go and.
Yeah, it will be nice. One of the possibilities was the app would be, would have a web access as well as just another app. One of the constituents was kind of talking about, you know, everybody gets so app crazy, you know, which app do I use? Where do I go? How do I do it? They can also implement that into our website. So if they just go to the website or even website on their phone, they don't necessarily have to quote, download an app. So that was another option that we can look at for that possibility. But again, we haven't made a sole decision on that. But that's just put in the budget so we can make that decision and, and move forward if, if you choose to do so when we bring that forward. Okay? Any questions on that?
Doesn't appear so.
All right. Next one is open gov conversion from City Works. One of the things from City Works when I first started is.
What page are you on?
19. Wait. One of the things is that we have an asset management program. As you know, that as Public Works grows, so does all of its requirements, all its building codes, all its permitting. And as you guys know, we have a tremendous amount of projects that are coming up. We would like to also incorporate as well as our asset management program to do also project management and also connecting to that outward facing notification for citizens. So all of that kind of all wrapped into one. Again, we don't have a sound decision on that, but we definitely have an idea on that conversion from City Works. But basically, it's a, it's a software upgrade, if you'd like, if you want to think of it like that, for, for us to move up to that next level to make sure that, again, that upfront cost is a little bit more expensive. However, our raw numbers look at our ROI, return on investment, a first year might be high, but the second and third and fourth year are going to bring our costs way down, but also give us that ability to address project management, citizen information, keeping track of our assets, having that web accessibility on right of way permit. So these are things that we currently don't have in the current system. And we want to make sure that our system is ever growing to meet the demand of our public and also being able to communicate that with the public. Okay? Any questions on that?
There's none.
Next one is salt spreaders, salt spreader holders. Going back to snow removal process, one of the things that we do currently right now is there's four wooden poles that are up there that are kind of shaggly bolted together. And when you have to hook up the salt spreader for the year, you have to tilt back the dump trucks up, and it's kind of a scary situation. One, they're not sound. And then two, they're not, they don't help. You got to maneuver just right for the equipment to get on and off equipment. So what we're trying to do is create a metal barn per se, not really enclosed, but basically metals, poles going up in the air, having it covered, and also having a beam that goes from left to right to be able to hoist the salt spreaders off the salt trucks in a safe manner so the guys can secure them for storage for later use. So one, it will help us be safer, and also it'll be covered to help us keep our equipment safe. So that's what that line item is about.
Well, that also, the way it's configured from what you're explaining to me, that also make it easier because they require a lot of maintenance with.
Yes.
Especially after a whole winter.
Yes.
Not only easier, but safer to.
Yes, definitely safer. I want to do, I do want to thank you for the equipment that you did purchase last year to help us out with that. We purchased two Hotsies with the budget from last year, some hoists that we can use inside the building that has made our cleaning of our equipment a lot easier. The, the staff has been thanking me left and right on like, oh, my gosh, this is so much easier. This is quicker. They take pride in their equipment a lot, a lot more. If you've seen the asphalt truck, if you see it, it's like, you're looking, is that a new one? I mean, that's, that's, that's how much pride they've taken with, with the new equipment that you've given them. So I want to thank you for that. And we just want to keep that, that process going. The next line item is the sidewalk inventory. This is again, one of your strategic planning goals that you implemented in our, in our meeting. I am addressing that. So this line item is an estimate of what we can do to get our sidewalk inventory so we can address those issues, whether we want to add, remove, or replace on that sidewalk inventory. And then last but not least is our skid loader attachment. This budget cycle, we are purchasing a skid loader, but we didn't put in the attachments. The skid loader that we're purchasing doesn't necessarily have the same attachments as the one that we currently have. It does have a, an attachment package that you could purchase on that. But that equipment is so old, we just automatic, we should just buy new equipment anyway. One of them is the broom, and one of them is a grinder. I know for sure that one of the brooms definitely has holes in it. It's out, it's rusted through. And then the grinder, we only have one operating grinder. So those, those are to replace it, but also to go with our new skid loader that we are going to purchase. Hopefully, probably not your next budget meeting, but the budget meeting after that, you'll see that on the agenda. That's all I have.
Anybody else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, next we have, what time we got here? Next we have citywide government body administration law, capital sales tax for us management, and our own Damon Hodges, city administrator. What do you got for us?
Good evening. As you can see, that a lot of what we brought before you takes into consideration of what you guys created with our strategic planning, our goals. And we try to tie those back to that. And you'll also see more of that as we go along when we come to our RBAs and things of that sort. So you may tie it back to what our actual goals were, from everything from the sidewalk inventory to traffic analysis, to some upcoming items along with your neighborhood improvements. To me, those four pillars helps us and guides us in as we create our budget. The next part, on the citywide portion, just speaking of that, and one of the items you had on there was taking, taking advantage of the upcoming World Cup, which two years ago seemed like it's pretty far away. It's not even pretty far away no more. It's like right around the corner. So, you know, as you can see, our top goal when it comes to citywide function was expanding our branding and marketing for citywide preparation for the World Cup, continue to implement the strategic planning and city goals, and continue to comprehensive plan update. And then the fourth one is complete the staffing study. So all four of those items are coming through, not only this, the staffing study would be this budget year, but the comprehensive plan is going to go into the next budget year. So let's go to the next page, page 32. You will see under printing and promotions, which is 101, 53241 is the account number, the Raytown 75th Anniversary Celebration. We put some funding in there, about 10,000. Not sure exactly what we're doing right now, but that is the upcoming year. So you might not know that, but the 75th anniversary is this upcoming year. And we want to put funds in the budget to celebrate that, and which to me expands our brand and the market because our celebration would not only include people that live here, but those who may have been previous residents, things of that sort. And the other one is the World Cup, 2026. It's another 10,000 in there. Both of those are, are opportunities for us expanded. You notice I took some funds from our citywide marketing, about 5,000 helped offset that cost as far as, because we knew it'd increase the budget. But trying to collaborate and use those four items to expand what we're trying to do, which is expand our footprint and our branding and marketing. As you go further down, you'll see at the bottom of your page, under account number 53999, the comprehensive zoning plan, which is the continuation of that. We knew we'd go beyond one year, one physical year into next physical year. So we had to go ahead and put that in the budget for the upcoming year. And the household hazardous waste is continuation of that. Shameless plug, it'll be coming up this coming Saturday, will be the household hazardous waste. I have more for you there during our board meeting. And we also continue with our recycling event, which we'll have in the fall, which we've done in the past. Any questions on citywide?
I don't see any.
All right. Your next one is governing body, which is, you all is 11. Still looks like it's 11. Didn't change anything on that one at all. So the budget did not change much. I did add some in legislative travel. And there's been some conferences. We have some that will be tending, an MML conference next month, which is good. But there's also a couple of other conferences coming up. So those are what we utilize to help pay those costs for you all to travel to those conferences. Other than that, that's pretty much it. Everything else is pretty straightforward on that. We kept our typical chamber events and our holiday reception and our Truman Heartland Gala about the same amount as it was before. The next one is, is a general fund on administration. Kind of lined out a couple of goals. It's, one of the goals you had was continue to pursue outside funding for infrastructure needs. The other one is continue to implement strategic planning. Well, the other ones are pretty much the same because citywide and kind of go together. You will see in the full-time employees, I did put in a potential of trying to hire summer interns. We had them before, and we haven't had them in quite some time. Actually, haven't had them since pre-COVID, to be honest with you. So we're looking at doing that again, maybe hiring two. It does to me a couple of things. One is provide someone to help us during the summer, but also spread what we do as a profession, spread what our city is as a profession, and give other people opportunities to look into us as potential places of employment when they graduate from college. We're looking for college students, hopefully that are majoring in political science, or maybe city administration, or engineering, whatever it may be, to, to come aboard. The other one that's not in here, but it should be, was our HR right now. I've always told you all, we have one HR person. We really need another HR person. So that's not shown in that, but that will be in the budget. We ultimately need more than one person in HR. So I know we have the staffing study coming down the way, but there's no doubt we need that. So I would much rather try to pursue that, knowing that we need that. We also know that, yeah, we just got one person. It's not enough. As far as other items within that, that budget itself, pretty much try to remain the same as before. And actually, may have went down a little bit because we didn't really change much regarding those items. But your dues and memberships are about the same along with equipment and computer services. So for the most part, we try to stay stagnant from what we had the year before. You will see a change though in that personnel services amount. That will go up some with, when you add the extra HR person. The other one is law. This is, this is not, go to sheet 43 would be best. And it has two, it has a, when it says annual salary, that's our, that's Ross, that's our prosecutor, part-time. And then on the professional service, the outside legal counsel, the 160, that's paying for Jennifer, for her company, the law firm. Pretty much the same as it was in the past. We didn't, there was a slight increase in the amount, but other than that, that's, hasn't changed at all. The next one you have, be sheet 45 or 50, and that's capital sales tax. And that's capital sales tax. The top portion is the citywide items, which typically building items. One of the things we have looked at in the past and just never kind of followed back up on was as we started looking at the staffing study, your next step would look at how do you, if you do make additional staff, how do you, what do you put them? And so we're looking at a building capacity study. That's where architects come in, look at what your space looks like, kind of determine if you're utilizing it to your best and most efficient way. I'm sure they'll find some place because offices are not as big as some of the we have now. And they're a lot smaller, spaces are different than what they had in the past. But we have to look at that deep and figure out what steps would we need to take if we do add personnel. The other one is the community development counter remodel. Last year, we did the design. Ultimately, when the counter, when they come to the front counter, we've made something there. We need to create more space to have separate meetings. Right now, everybody kind of waits in line. So you may have someone out of control who may have a serious issue that needs to be done in private or to try to shift to the side along with someone coming to do business, whatever it may be. But those, we have a design there that we need to bid out that would help increase that capacity. Also, if you've been there, you see that our administrative staff backs are pretty much, pretty close to the front, which can cause some issues. My time right here. Got a question?
Mr. Myers has a question right in the area you're in.
I can wait until the end, it's actually in governing body.
Okay.
And the other one you see is fountain. I know this is arbitrary. So with the Fifty-Ninth Street project and Raytown Road, the fountain that we have in front will have to be removed as part of the project. And with that, that amount would help us bring it back something. Over the years, I've been asked, can we replace it? Can we put it back in? The pipes are beyond repair. And the, the infrastructure around it, up under it and internally is beyond repair. So we will remove it, finish majority of the construction project and have another project that would help us. We haven't set on what that will look like. We will have a work session with you all to give a couple of proposals of what that could look like because fountains are different than what they were before. But some type of water feature with some type of, that does not only make, that's attractive, but also something that's not caused long-term maintenance issues, is a good way to put that. So we got a few ideas from our architects, but nothing that we have set on. And we'll bring you all back to look at that. I think we best has a work session so we can kind of look at our different options that we have. But we did come up with a budget based off talking to the architects of what that potentially could be. And that's where the 200,000 came from. Other than that, the next one is replacement of our, updating of our IT items from our workstations and our server. Server's not this year, we did that this past year. But the upcoming is our network switches along with some workstations. And then this Dell server, which is your other server. We found that, for one, where we currently keep everything at is a pretty antiquated room, but it did do its purpose when we were out of electricity for quite some time because it has to continue, stay cool, things of that sort. But the servers themselves, luckily, they're a lot smaller than what we had in the past. And this new one would help with that capacity as well. And that's about it.
That is exciting news about the fountain. I don't think that thing has worked since I was in high school and totally did not put bubbles in it when I was in high school. Let's see.
I guess we have to put a camera on it too, just in case.
I still might put bubbles in it, you never know. Let's back up to governing body, page thirty-six. Where was it? I just lost it. Oh, Farmers Market, we didn't have one this year. You budgeted five grand and we're budgeting five grand again as a contact?
I've had a few people interested since we did not, they took notice that we did not have it this year. And I've had at least three different contractors contact us to maybe look at what we could do in the upcoming year. They didn't want to sit down because they're in the middle of their season. But the hope is this fall, going into the winter, we could sit down with someone to help with us to put it in place.
Awesome.
Because not only do we not have it, but also the one that was there retired was on the, and so ultimately, we don't have anyone providing that vegetable service, so.
Cool. Anyone else? Mr. Edgar?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a kind of a simple question. You know, in the talking about recession and I, you know, as I drive around Raytown, I've seen businesses that have gone out of business, but see if you have new ones. Do we, do we have any way or do we try to, to monitor what's happening to the economy of Raytown in terms of business closures and balance with the new ones that are opening up? Do we actually do that and how do we do it?
Well, we track, when people are closing, we do track, hey, this business closed. Those who sign up, I mean, that's for getting our business licenses together, that's part of it. One of the things that Diane mentioned earlier is that we actually have a person that goes out proactively to help us with getting everybody in compliance. And that helps us with tracking businesses that are coming in, businesses going out. One thing I want us to look at too is, the other thing is that what we've seen is there's a change in what's typically offered now. A lot more people want to have mixed spaces. We got a building down here off of Raytown Road where it has several businesses, even though we see one building. And so we, we see that continue to grow as far as tracking those that may close and who may open. Yeah, we do that. I mean, we look at our business licenses and figure out that. I can't say you're going to exchange dollar for dollar because some businesses are going to be different than the others. But we do track what's closing and what's open.
And does it ever affect our budget when we do that?
Well, not as much as we, thankfully, not as much as we. But mainly it's because of where our sales tax is at. I can't say it will cause no huge increase either, but nothing has caused us to go down in our revenue projections, I can say.
Thank you.
All right, next. Got it all? All right. Moving on to you, Michael and John? You got anything to present to us? Anything else? Any questions? Very good. Turn on your microphone, please, for that's something.
I did have a question. I'm sorry for coming in late, but under the general funds on public works, are we still keeping the budget line item for administrative assistant?
Yes, that's the one that
You need to come up and talk on a mic, please. Make sure it's recorded.
That is just an accounting adjustment. We are not losing or gaining any administrative assistance. The way the budget reflected was not matching our FTE chart. So basically, we're just adjusting the FTE chart to match what our budget was actually doing.
So that, that position is no longer there?
It's still there.
So you're planning to hire someone for it? Oh, okay.
It's just, it's a, how would you say that?
We just split the positions between general fund and sewer fund based on how much work they allocate in each one. So for example, my sewer clerks are 100% sewer, whereas I'm only booked, I believe, 35% sewer for my salary. So a majority of my salary falls into the 101 general fund, but a portion of it falls into sewer. And that's due because the sewer is proprietary fund. So it has to be funded completely by the sewer bills that go out, not by taxes. So we have to keep those separate. So when we book an employee under the 101 or 501, or if we split it, we do have to allocate how much time they actually spend providing the sewer fund a service.
So that position, in other words, there's nobody there, so you're not allocating anything for it? It's just sitting on the books?
No, the, the budget did not reflect the FTE.
Oh, okay.
So the FTE is being adjusted to match the budget numbers. So there is no change in the FTE or the, the FTE is being changed to match the budget. Budget is correct.
What we'll do though, what you, the next step we'll do is we'll provide each of you all the draft budget before the beginning of September and we'll have that corrected. Ultimately, when you go through your budget numbers, going back to what Rob was saying, when you put a percentage in of what a person may go, I can't split myself up, even though I feel like I can sometimes. But I'm 50/50, if I'm 50/50, the way the numbers crunch, it looks like I'm a half and half. And sometimes that, or I might be 30/40, yeah. And then it doesn't line up to be one. I mean,
So
you want more than one to me anyway, don't you? So, so we'll work on it. The numbers work out on our end, but when you, when you start doing your, when they translate those numbers from a spreadsheet to those items, it doesn't always translate to show where it should be.
So one of the things that I was doing to match the budget and the FTE, I was like, my FTE says this, but my budget says that. So we're making sure that the budget is remaining the same, but the FTE matches that budget. So we have to change the FTE from last year to this year.
So instead of him being 50/50, he's a 1.0 and this here is a zero. Because see, that's what's confusing is it's sitting here.
Right, so last year, we had 1.10 and 101 and 0.9 and 501. So that means two employees. Well, this year, we're doing 0.8, 0.8 of each one. So 1.6 and then 0.4 in the other.
So one and a half?
No. 1.6 plus 0.4 is
Oh, got you, got you.
I want to see that point. Mr. Myers?
I move for adjournment.
Second. Second.
Second, first time, Mr. I'm sorry. We have a motion by Mr. Myers and a second by Ms. Garza for adjournment. Let's do this by affirmation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone against? Okay, we are adjourned from this meeting at 7:12 PM. And I am now calling.